Good evening. The Wayzata Public Schools Board of Education Regular Board Meeting for Monday, October 8, 2018 will please come to order. And will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Eric Brown.
Here.
Linda Cohen.
Here.
Andrea Keen.
Here.
Anita Lucky.
Here.
Chris McCullough.
Here.
Cheryl Polzin.
Here.
Sarah Johansson.
Here.
And Dr. Anderson.
Here.
All right. Thank you. Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming out on this rainy, sort of drizzly evening. The first item on our agenda is to approve the agenda and the consent agenda items. The consent agenda items are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no discussion of, separate discussion of these items unless a board member or citizen so requests, in which event the item will be removed as a consent agenda item and addressed individually. The consent agenda items are contained in the packet, and the recommended action is to approve the agenda and the consent agenda items. Is there a motion to that effect?
I so move.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. There is no discussion, and I think we have a roll call vote.
Yes, Linda Cohen.
Yes.
Andrea Keen.
Yes.
Anita Lucky.
Yes.
Chris McCullough.
Yes.
Cheryl Polzin, yes. Eric Brown.
Yes.
And Chair Johansson.
Yes. All right, and so we have an agenda. And the first item on our agenda are reports from organizations, and I don't see our student council representative, so we will, we will put that aside. Maybe we'll get started a little soon. If she happens to come, we might slide her in at some point, but we will move forward to one of the highlights of the evening, which are some recognitions.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome. My name is Chase Anderson. I'm the superintendent for the school district. It's great to see you here this evening, and thank you for joining us. As Chair Johansson indicated, it's my honor and duty at each of our regularly scheduled school board meetings to convene the recognitions portion of our school board meetings. And tonight, we have three categories of recognitions, and the first one is, we always start out with, are those individuals who have announced their retirement since our most recent school board meeting, and we have three of those individuals, none of whom I see in attendance tonight. They're probably tuned in and watching us on live television. They are Faith Ettested, paraprofessional Greenwood, 23 years; Kim Joyner, Culinary Express High School, 11 years; and Debbie Singler, paraprofessional Kimberly Lane, 30 years. And although I don't think anyone's in attendance tonight of that group, but regardless, we'll give them a round of applause and thank them for their service. We also are recognizing two employees of the month tonight, and to start with, I'd like to invite Annette Korlczak forward, please, for our first recognition. Congratulations. Before I turn the mic over to Annette, I'll share the script that was submitted on her behalf. She's the best teacher ever. Mrs. Kay helps me feel good about doing math. Annette lives the philosophy of school and community connectedness to support students' success. She is always looking for new ideas and creative ways to support all students and families at Oakwood. These are some of the comments that were said by students and staff when asked about Annette Korlczak. Over the years, Annette has been a kindergarten teacher and, for the past four years, Oakwood's achievement interventionist. When faced with a challenge, Annette will seek out the appropriate supports and will look outside the box for a resolution. She does not, she does a lot of work behind the scenes and doesn't look for recognition. Last year, she worked with the Destination Imagination Team made up of 4th and 5th graders during lunch and recess. The team went on to the Global Finals in Nashville, Tennessee. Annette also extended our after-school programs to include 1st through 3rd grade and created a menu of different options for them to engage in learning and fun and new ways. Annette and Ellen Deutscher, one of the English learner teachers, started meeting monthly with families at Lakeview Commons and with other achievement interventionists, started our Parents Empowering All Kids, or PEAK, program. The mission of PEAK is to increase parent knowledge and understanding of the school system and how to support their children's academic success, both at home and at school. PEAK University continued this year with a new group of families. Annette continues to advocate and educate for equal access and opportunity for all. The positive comments and connections are the true measure of the impact that Annette's work has had for Oakwood. We are proud to nominate Annette Korlczak as the June 2018 Employee of the Month. Annette, congratulations.
When I was first hired, I was hired to teach 1st grade in a brand-new school called Gleason Lake. And when the school year was set to start, actually, the building wasn't quite ready yet, so we had to start the year in the old Widdston Building across the street. We started the year, and when it came time, it was MEA weekend, and we moved the entire school to Gleason Lake over that weekend. A little stressful. However, I don't think the term "growth mindset" was in place at that point, but it was used, for sure. The support, the collaboration, the can-do attitudes of everyone involved, it was evident that this place has it. Now, I'm in a position at Oakwood as the achievement interventionist, and I see growth mindset used at work every day. Whether it is with classroom teachers or interventionists and other support staff as we try to figure out what best is going to work for a particular student, or it's also there when I work with my principal, Sarah Beth, on how to best meet the needs of students in after-school programs. And it is very evident when I work with colleagues to develop deeper relationships with, with parents through parent meetings or programs like PEAK Family University. It's where, it's there where families can better support their children's learning and navigate a school system that might be quite different from the one that they grew up in. So although I am honored to be recognized as Employee of the Month, my work really reflects the board, the vision the board has set, the collaboration of the administrators, and especially the amazingly dedicated staff who I get to work with every day. Thank you.
We have one more Employee of the Month recognition this evening, and I'd like to invite John Deutsch forward. John, congratulations. And I would like to share this script submitted on John's behalf. The Wayzata Public Schools administrative team is proud to recognize John Deutsch, Director of Facilities and Transportation, as the August Employee of the Month. During the past several years, John has been involved with many school district endeavors that have required his dedicated focus and energy every day he reports to work. A few things that stand out about John's work include, but are not limited to the following: Provides leadership and guidance to our exemplary Buildings and Grounds Team, who collectively ensure a clean and safe environment where our students can learn and our teachers and staff can bring their best every day. Provided leadership and oversight for numerous construction projects and facility improvements, including the construction of Meadow Ridge Elementary School that opened in 2016 and our 9th grade elementary school that will open, 9th elementary school that will open in 2019. Classroom and core space additions at several of the district's school buildings, including a major expansion at Wayzata High School. Infrastructure improvements to mechanical, climate control, and ventilation systems, as well as replacement and refurbishment of paved surfaces, sidewalks, floorings, wall coverings, and windows. Ensures the best possible winter maintenance efforts to provide safe driving and walking surfaces surrounding our schools and other facilities. During the winter months, all-night work can seem to be the norm by John's team to ensure snow removal that allows students, staff, and parents to navigate the grounds safe, safely surrounding our facilities. Provides leadership and oversight to the district's transportation system that includes nearly 100 school buses for daily routes, as well as ensuring that co-curricular programming has reliable, on-time transportation. John ensures good communication and solid relationships with the personnel of our key transportation partners. Participates in the District Safety Committee to ensure frequent review of district-wide safety procedures and addressing environmental considerations to ensure healthy environments. Ensures community use of our facilities by working closely with the district's Community Education Department. Community users have come to expect that the facilities will be ready for their use and in a condition that ensures a quality experience while they are convening a meeting or conducting athletic practices or games. Given his naturally humble nature, John is not one to seek accolades or any special attention for his personal work. However, his leadership is paramount to setting the conditions for his team. John frequently emphasizes the importance of teamwork. Together, they make a difference, a significant daily contribution that supports and improves student learning and that creates a pleasant working environment for teachers and all other staff. John and his team are a valuable asset to our school district. Although the work that John and his team do can too often go without adequate levels of acknowledgement and appreciation, the work they do is invaluable to the quality experience that our students and staff members enjoy every day. John, congratulations and thanks for all you do to help us live our mission of providing excellence for each and every student. Well done.
First Superintendent Anderson, Chair Board, thank you very much. Obviously, very well-written, and I do appreciate the fact that, from Buildings and Grounds Transportation to everyone else in my department, the fact that it was mentioned, a lot of times, I just try to stay out of the way. It seems to work better. I have, I have a phenomenal staff, and we have phenomenal teachers, and we, all of those things that were mentioned have caused an impact one way or another, and I couldn't do it without my entire staff, so, thank you.
I do have to add that oftentimes, as I'm walking up to a building in the winter, I'm even seeing John doing some of the snow shoveling, and I'm hoping that that won't have to commence anytime soon. So, thank you very much to both of our recognitions tonight, and we so appreciate the work that you do. So we are going to move from the fun part of the evening to the policies. This is a time where if you choose to not engage, we certainly wish you a wonderful evening. Thank you so much for being here, and again, thanks for all that you do on behalf of the So sometimes, we have a student curriculum presentation, but I think our buildings are still getting ready, so for the viewing audience wondering why we're not doing that, our principals and our students are still engaging, so we can jump right into the superintendent's reports and policies with Dr. Johnson.
Thank you. Madam Chair, Members of the Board, and Superintendent Anderson, attached are policies and regulations for your review. The policies and regulations have been reviewed by the appropriate district staff and compared to and aligned with model policies prepared by the Minnesota School Boards Association. The policies and regulations have also been reviewed by the Policy Committee of the Board. The policies are listed below, as is the recommended action.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Johnson. So the policies contained in your packet that everyone has had a number of opportunities to review are 502, Student Discipline; 510, Student Sex Nondiscrimination; 613, Curriculum Development and Adoption; 619, Educational Surveys and Research and Effective Schools' Research; 623, School District Accountability; 624, Students' Progress Report to Parents; 627, Instruction Concerning Controversial Topics; and 629, Alternative Instruction. And the recommended action is to approve the school board policies that I just named. Is there a motion to that effect?
I so move, and I move that we waive the second reading and put these through for final approval today.
One second. All right, so it's been moved and seconded that we waive the first reading and move all policies forward through second reading and final approval. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I just would like to say that this is a lot of work, and these are a lot of really big topics, and so clearly, the Policy Committee was very busy this, this year, or this month, reviewing the policies. And thank you to Dr. Johnson for leading that team and for Director Cohen for, for leading that charge into the Policy Committee, because this is heavy work, and although it looks like a pretty quick swoop in this meeting, there's a lot that went into it before that. So, the most, the recommended action to approve the policies for first and second reading has been moved and seconded. All, and so we can entertain a vote, all in favor of the recommended action, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries. We have a number of policies. Thank you so much. And the next item under Superintendent Reports are a number of items under Finance and Business Services. Mr. Westrom.
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. This evening, we have three items in the business area. The first item would be our monthly financial reports, and I'm just waiting for Mr. Lloyd. Maybe I'll use a hard copy.
It's always good to have a paper.
Okay, enclosed for the school board's review and information are the following: Financial reports as of August 2018; the Student Activity Fund Report; the Investment Summary Report; an analysis of financial reports; a statement of revenue; and a statement of expenditures. And just a reminder to the board that the school district's fiscal year ends on June 30th, and we have preliminary results that we have gone over slightly with the Finance Committee of the Board this afternoon, and basically, the budget that's in place right now between July 1st and June 30th of 2019 is based upon the estimates used in accordance with last year's actual financial results. So everything appears to be reasonable at this point, and I would be happy to respond to any questions if any board members do have any questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Westrom. Colleagues, you've had a chance to review the monthly financial reports. There's no school board action required, but are there any questions or comments?
I guess I have a question.
Yes.
Madam Chair. Can you let us know if our attendance is on target and if it's different from projected, if that makes any difference to our finances? Please.
Yes, Members of the Board, actually, our student enrollment actually is based on membership, so if students are actually registered to attend Wayzata Schools and are attending the Wayzata Schools and don't have 15 consecutive days of absence, we actually count them as students for general education aid. And we currently will be looking at the October 1st child count to determine the number of students that we will serve in the 2018-19 school year. Right now, our-
That's a better question.
I'm sorry, what?
Next month, that's a better question.
Yes, next month, that would be, well, we actually have that information, but now we're going through and correcting any errors, just for, for your information again. The state collects this data on a statewide basis, and so we expect to get our first statewide edit, and they want to make sure that multiple districts aren't counting the same students. And there's a lot of mobility that can occur during the month of September. Great question.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? The Finance Committee of the Board does meet in advance of this meeting, actually, and we went through a number of these in more detail as well, so, thank you, Mr. Westrom.
Our second item this evening is a, a resolution to reject the RFP proposals received by the District for Solar Development Strategic Partners. And I'll just mention real quick, make a couple opening remarks. You're probably aware that the district is always interested in looking at strategies to reduce its carbon footprint, as well as to conserve energy, and the district has been very busy with a number of items and a number of projects throughout the district, including replacing boilers, replacing lights with energy-efficient lights, and we have been doing an incredible job, and our staff have been doing an incredible job, of looking at opportunities to reduce the use of energy overall, such as how we use our buildings, shutting off computer labs, et cetera. We also wanted to look at the possible implementation of a rooftop solar, rooftop solar energy alternative. So on April 24, 2018, the district authorized its energy strategic partner, Connect Energy Group, to issue a joint request for a proposal with Hopkins Public Schools for Comprehensive Engineering, Procurement, and Construction Services and Project Financing for On-Site Rooftop Solar Energy Development Solutions. And the joint RFP was issued with the goal of capturing more favorable pricing that comes with larger economies of scale. On July 9th, the board authorized the administration to further look into working with two of the finalists, Borrego Solar and Microgrid Energy, to be strategic partners for on-site rooftop solar energy development solutions. We worked closely with our strategic partners to look at where the ideal place to actually put the solar panels would be, and it would appear that Oakwood Elementary School and East Middle School have the newest roofs. Typically, the life cycle of solar is about 25 years. However, due to the evolving nature of solar energy production and the district's continued need for additional space and continued modification of space, such as additions and modifications to our buildings, the administration arrived at the conclusion that it would be impractical to move ahead with rooftop solar at this time. We would like to thank the Citizens Finance Advisory Council members, who devoted several meetings and many hours to discussing this matter. CFAC concurs with the district administration's recommendation to reject all proposals received by the district at this time for on-site rooftop solar energy development, and so the recommended action is before you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Westrom. The recommended action, as indicated, is to reject all proposals for on-site rooftop solar energy development solutions received by the district through the joint request for proposal dated on April 24, 2018. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Mr. Brown.
I just might reiterate the many, many hours that CFAC dedicated to this topic. It was, it was thoroughly vetted, and while we're very conscious of energy savings and utility savings opportunities, this just wasn't the, the right opportunity, and we'll continue to look for those, and, and thank CFAC for all the time that they did dedicate to this.
Thank you. Yes. Mr. McCullough.
I just had one question. Do we know what Hopkins has decided to do? Just curious.
Sure. Members of the Board, I believe that Hopkins is continuing to move ahead, and Hopkins is in a different situation than we are. I did have the opportunity to talk to my counterpart, and they've been making significant reinvestments in energy-saving projects such as lights and boilers, probably a little sooner than we started with those. And they really don't see adding additional, or adding additional classrooms or modifying their buildings to the extent that we need to keep future boards with the option to be able to do so. So I think we're just at a different life cycle.
Okay.
Thank you. Yep, thank you.
Any other questions? I have one. Mr. Westrom, are you, could you share at all with the, with the board and with the community some things that the district is doing already to, to reduce the carbon footprint and some, and maybe even some things that we feel like we can be doing moving forward if this solar opportunity is not right for us at this moment?
Sure. Madam Chair, Members of the Board, actually, I think just on a monthly basis, we do meet with a committee of the board, the Facility Committee, and just recently, we chose to embark on replacing all lights in the entire Wayzata High School with LED, and so you're probably aware that that facility is lit almost 24 hours a day, either being used for 16 hours of the day or being cleaned and maintained the other eight hours. So that's one of the main examples that we looked at. I believe we're looking at approximately $25,000 of annual savings just in lighting costs, but then, because the LED lights have a longer useful life, the internal rate of return is just a couple years, and that will pay dividends to the district's taxpayers in a financial dividend, or a financial savings, but obviously, it'll reduce the carbon footprint as well. We've been replacing a lot of our boilers with energy-efficient boilers throughout the district, and we're still planning to do that, but we have nearly 1.8 million square feet of space that's either lit, heated, or cooled, and so there's many of opportunities for us to continue to reduce that carbon footprint.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. The other discussion. No, the, the recommended action has been moved and seconded. I think we have a roll call vote.
Yes. Andrea Keen.
Yes.
Anita Lucky.
Yes.
Chris McCullough.
Yes.
Cheryl Polzin, yes. Eric Brown.
Yes.
Linda Cohen.
Yes.
And Chair Johansson.
Yes.
Passes. All right.
Okay, our final item of business this evening is, is something that we do on an annual basis. You're probably aware of the Minnesota Open Enrollment Statutes that allow for non-residents to apply to attend a district other than that district with, within which they reside. This resolution is to provide for open enrollment, non-resident agreements for the 2019-20 school year, and recommending that we close all open enrollment into the district. So I'm not going to read everything, other than to indicate that we will follow Minnesota Statute 124D.03 subdivision 2, which means not only will we close open enrollment by board resolution, but we will make sure that we're in compliance with the statute by allowing 1% of the total enrollment at each grade level in the district to open enrollment to the district. So, an example of this is if we have 900 students in kindergarten, we would accept nine resident students into the district to, to meet that requirement. So the recommended action is before you, and would you like me to continue to read, or are you comfortable approving the recommendation to close open enrollment?
I think, I think we're okay.
Okay.
The guidelines are-
So if you want to read the recommended-
Sure, right. Yep. So the recommended action before us is to approve the recommendation to close open enrollment for 2019-2020 in grades 1 through 12, and limit open enrollment in kindergarten to the siblings and children of employees. So that is the recommended action before you. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved, and all passed away with the reading of the resolution.
All right, thank you.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, great. So, hearing no discussion, this is another roll call vote.
All right, Anita Lucky.
Yes.
Chris McCullough.
Yes.
Cheryl Polzin, yes. Eric Brown.
Yes.
Linda Cohen.
Yes.
Andrea Keen.
Yes.
And Chair Johansson.
Yes.
Passes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Westrom. All right. Fantastic. Well, that, I think, concludes our superintendent reports. And now, for the moment that we have all been waiting for, right? I know that there are TV cameras and people lined up all outside, the huge announcement. We have an elementary that is currently named number nine, and it needs a new name, and tonight is the night that, that we get to go through that process. So I'll just give a little bit of background for our viewing audience. The public was invited, this is regarding the naming of elementary number nine, the public was invited to submit their ideas for the name of the new elementary school over a six-week period from August 1st through September 10, 2018. The invitation to submit possible names was shared by email to all district parents, staff, and students. Information was also posted on the district's social media channels and shared with the local media. A total of 840 names were submitted for consideration. The steering committee of Jenny Berg, the new principal of the 9th elementary school, Amy Parnell, our director of communication- Amy Parnell, our Director of Communications and Community Engagement, Andrew Hagan, our Communication Specialist, and Kristen Tolson, the Director of Administrative Service, then deleted any duplicates, known conflicts, and submissions that were not realistic or appropriate. The list of possible names was then narrowed to a list of 20 names by focusing on the unique geographic features associated with the location of the new school, which is located by, near the corner of County Road 101 North and 54th Avenue North. Meadow Ridge and Oakwood parents, as well as members of the Attendance Area Committee, were invited to serve on the elementary school naming committee. Eight volunteers attended a meeting on September 17th to narrow the list of 20 possible school names, first to 10, and then to three for consideration by the school board. So, after receiving an overview of the process and the geographic features of the area where the school was being built, members of the committee selected the following three names: Northwoods Elementary, Forest Creek Elementary, and Prairie Creek Elementary. So, now, board members, I have for you a ballot, and how this will go is that all board members will be asked to vote by ballot for your first choice. And the majority vote will win. If they're in case of a tie, since we have three, we will do a revote with the top two finalists. So, here are some of these.
Keep one.
Oh. I keep one. Okay.
All right. Everybody vote.
All right. On the edge of your seat, I am sure. I recruit Mr. Brown to be the witness. Okay. All right. And you have finished voting. So, the process will be that the clerk right now will review the ballots with the oversight of our treasurer, Mr. Brown, and they will make an announcement. I anticipate, once that announcement happens, that maybe there will be a motion and a second for approval of the name.
I'll do this like really slowly.
Right. The suspense.
Do we need a public auditing firm to oversee this?
Right.
This must be through process of elimination. Okay. So, here are our results, Madam Chair.
Okay. And the results, as tabulated by the clerk and overseen by the treasurer, are that the winner and the proposed new name for elementary number nine will be Wayzetta Northwoods Elementary.
Very good. Madam Chair, I'd like to-
[applause]
Well, we're not done yet. Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Northwoods Elementary as the new name for our ninth elementary school in our district.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the elementary number nine will be the new Wayzetta Northwoods Elementary. I don't think we need to roll call since we all submitted ballots. So, all in favor of calling elementary number nine, naming elementary number nine Northwoods Elementary, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries. Congratulations, Principal Berg, you are now the principal of Northwoods Elementary. And Dr. Anderson, you have a new-
Yes. Thank you. Finally.
Can stop calling it number, the question will be, how long will it take before we all stop calling it number nine? Right? All right. Fantastic. Well, that's exciting. It's a fun way. That was our first item under other board action, and the second's our board reports. Are there any board reports this evening? Mr. Brown?
Yes. I would like to share just a couple things from my routine board report.
Fantastic.
I wanted to touch on the Policy Committee. We do spend a lot of detailed time going through and thank the administration for all of their efforts going through the policies. It does seem like we go through them quickly at the board meetings, but I spend a lot of detailed time digging through MSBA model policies, past policies in the district, and making sure that what the policies are reflect current practice and future practice. So, thank the administration and my Policy Committee colleagues. There's quite a bit of detail that goes into that committee. The other piece I wanted to share, the Wayzetta Ed Fund recently had their annual golf tournament and had a record year and raised nearly $50,000, which is great. Nice improvement for them. A couple things to mention there. Please let the teachers know in your districts and in your schools to get grant applications in, including those that will be at Northwoods Elementary, not number nine. So, please apply for grants. That is open through the end of the year. The other piece that I want to mention with the Wayzetta Education Fund, they are looking for new members, new volunteer members. So, if you or someone you know is interested in joining the board, take a look at the Wayzetta Ed Fund website, or reach out to someone. There should be a contact within your school that can help direct you and get you involved. So, those are the two that I wanted to highlight tonight.
All right. Thanks. And is it edfund.org or Wayzetta Ed Fund? I'm putting you on the spot.
You are, yes.
We could Google Wayzetta Ed Fund and we would find it.
Ed Fund.
UEF.org, I believe.
WEF.org for anyone that's interested in that.
I think you're safe with a number of the different versions to get there.
Okay. All right. Fantastic. Thank you, Eric. Any other board reports or comments from our board colleagues? No. All right. And next on our agenda is an audience opportunity to address the board. Is there anyone in the audience? Ashley, have you received any notification? Okay. All right. Well, hearing no one that wants to chat with us, so give us a high five for our new elementary, Northwoods Elementary, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor of adjourning tonight's meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no. The Wayzetta Public Schools Board of Education regular meeting for Monday, October 8th, 2018, is adjourned.